Testing and had a lot of good public participation. So, thank everyone, thanks to all of you, Mr. Moore, Dr. Register, and other staff members who were there to help to go out.
Mr. Hayes? Mr. Hayston?
Thank you. Yesterday, Ms. Shepherd, Mr. Hayes, and I joined Dr. Coverstone and Ms. Swan for conversations with eight prospective charter operators that have submitted letters in intent for the 2014 application cycle. Over four hours, we heard from each operator about their school concept and the proposed approach, and frankly, I'm really encouraged by what I heard. More than half are suggesting concepts that appear to conform with the policy that we established in November. For those that weren't conforming, we encourage them to rethink their approach before the April 1st application deadline. The message from Bransford was clear, MNPS is looking for partners. We're intent on doing it in a way that's fiscally sustainable and meets the needs of the district as a whole. Right now, there really seem to be kind of two poles in the conversation, if you will. At one end, we've got Rocketship Nashville saying, "We're interested in doing whatever the district wants and whatever the district says it needs." At the other end, we've got Tennessee Charter School Center, who's proposing to charterize the McGabbic Cluster strangely, just one month after President Obama praised it. So, apparently, they did not get the memo from the White House. So, that concept is going to require a lot more conversation. But, another thing that we heard that was interesting was our plan to consider cost-neutral conversions of low-performance schools has caught the attention of KIPS National Leadership and has prompted them to rethink their position on it. So, on balance, it was a positive day. We'll see where things go next. Thank you to Dr. Coverstone and Ms. Swan for putting together the meetings, and of course, thanks to the charter operators and their board members for taking the time to participate. Just two items to watch on the calendar going forward. On Monday, March 3rd, the Budget and Finance Committee will participate in a joint work session with the Metro Council's Budget, Finance, and Education Committees. We will use this as an opportunity to revisit the projections we made last fall for the 2014-15 operating year and update our colleagues in the council on some of the substantive changes that are causing things to shift around. Those shifts include, but are not limited to, Governor Haslam's teacher pay raise proposal and what it means for our local required match estimates on the Phase 1 of MNPS's pre-K expansion plan, and then also slower-than-enrollment charter, slower-than-expected charter enrollment, which is causing some shifts in the numbers. Hopefully, we'll also be able to share some high-level information at that point on the outcome of our early retirement incentive offering. This Friday is the deadline for employees to opt-in. It will take a few days to crunch the numbers, but we'll at least have a sense of how many people are going to participate by Monday, March 3rd. So, the joint work session will be in the council chambers on Monday, March 3rd, at 5:30 PM. Finally, the very next day, on Tuesday, March 4th, the Budget and Finance Committee of the School Board will continue planning back here at Bransford, will convene at 5:00 PM that afternoon to talk about the calendar for the remainder of March as we head toward hopeful final budget approval by the board at our April 8 business meeting, followed by a likely mid-April budget hearing with Mayor Dean. So, again, National School Board, Budget and Finance Committee meeting on Tuesday, March 4th, at 5:00 PM right there at Bransford. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Shepherd?
I do have a couple. First of all, I would like to thank Dr. Register, who came out very early this morning to speak to the Dawson-Hermitage Morning Exchange Club. They're very excited to hear from Dr. Register, and he presented some of the high initiatives that we have going on in Metro right now, and they were very excited to hear that. In fact, the meeting lasted longer than it normally does, and people usually try to sneak out, and we didn't have very much of that this morning. So, thank you, Dr. Register, for doing that. Yesterday morning, I wanted to say that I began my day at Hermitage Elementary, where I got to witness the morning meeting that Ms. Brenda Steele has talked so much about. And I have to say, I watched two different ones, and they were both done differently, but they were both done very well, and apparently, it has to do with the students that they have in their classroom, and it was a wonderful... I'm glad I got to experience that, since I've heard everyone talks so much about that. And also, I got to read to both of the kindergarten classes. And the icing on the cake was that I was in the room of our grandson Zachary, who's in kindergarten at Hermitage Elementary School. And when his teacher asked if he would like to introduce their special guest, he said, "It's my Nana."[288.27][288.27](Laughter). So, I've gone from being introduced as Mama to Nana, and I have to say, that was quite an honor. So, I thank Ms. Kelly Hakers and the reading specialist for inviting me. It was a lot of fun.
Thank you. Ms. Spearon?
Yes, thank you. I do have several, so I appreciate your indulgence.
All right, we've got the timer ready for you. No worries.[311.58][311.58](Laughter). Get ready.
We had, I thought, a very well-attended community meeting last night, and it was attended by about 130 people, parents and teachers, and three council people, Council Lady Berkeley Allen, Phil Clayburn, and Peter Westerholm. So, we were happy to have their attendance. Although the meeting started at 5:00 and it was scheduled to end at 6:30, Dr. Register was kind enough to continue taking questions until about close to 7:30. There were so many people that wanted to speak, and even at 7:30, there were still about 40 people there. Clearly, this was a much-needed gathering that created an opportunity for speaking and listening. We know parents are critical stakeholders, and we appreciate all of his folks. I also appreciate Dr. Register's comments and the overview that he and Paul Changis and David Moore gave, the overview of the testing policy, and also for providing over the questions and answers. Friday night, Hunter's Lane had a military ball, and I want to thank Colonel Sprouse, First Sergeant Richardson, and the cadets at Hunter's Lane for asking me to be the keynote speaker. This event demonstrated outstanding planning, the power of teamwork and cooperation. Students not only worked hard in their preparation, they also worked hard at their play. So, that was a great social event. We also had TSTA, Tennessee School Board Association Day on the Hill this past week, and several of us met with legislators, including Senator Steve Dickerson, Representative Love, Chairman Thoreau, Representative Mike Stewart, and we appreciate all the legislators listening to our concerns. Next week, we have Read Across America, one of my favorite days, and I'll be reading at Chadwell, Dan Mills, Gateway, and East End Prep. A couple of weeks ago, I talked about Patty Yon. She's a principal at Dan Mills Elementary and just a superb principal with wonderful leadership capability. And I just found out she had been nominated as Principal, to be Principal of the Year by her peers. So, I say to you, Patty, good luck, and I've got my fingers crossed. Also, last but not least, we attended the Emerging Knowledge Forum this past week with Dr. Warren Simmons, who's the Executive Director of the Annenberg Institute for School Reform, and he delivered a fascinating presentation about equity and excellence in education for all students. The evolution of education reform was considered over the past 50 to 60 years, including the role of the federal government, pedagogy, philosophies, and even the history of testing and what part that played during the years. A panel filled with questions afterwards from the audience, and I want to give a shout-out to Laura Henson, who is the Director of Information Management and Decisions. Laura previously worked with the Mayor's Office, and she's very familiar with the issues of poverty. She suggested that so often, decisions about the poor are made by those who really don't have a good understanding of poverty. And I certainly felt that way when we saw Dr. Donna Beagle. I thought I knew about poverty until I first heard, you know, speak of her own personal experience and the book. I know we all have a copy. I haven't gotten through all of it yet, but it's really a fascinating book. Laura says that we need to have conversations about our impoverished students because they're never elevated to the decision-making level, and we really don't know what they need unless we listen to them. So, she suggested that maybe in the future, we can have a forum where we can bring people together and have a citywide discussion about this, and I'm excited about that and look forward to hearing more about it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Dr. Brennan?
Yes, I have two announcements concerning the Council of Great City Schools. The Exeter Global Bernard Harris Math and Science Scholarships are ready to receive applications, and this scholarship is for two males, two females, for $5,000 each, seniors who will be majoring in math or science. The deadline is April 7, and the Counseling Department has helped me to distribute this information to all high school principals, math and science teachers, and counselors. Students may apply online this year, so we hope that some of our students in Metro will apply. Also, the Council of Great City Schools is calling for presentations for the Fall Conference that will be held in Milwaukee with Tuncsman, October 20th through the 26th, 2014. Dr. Register and his staff are working on some presentations, and if you do apply, please let the executive staff know of your plans if you are approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan.
And I just want to, as a quick reminder, remind everybody that the first Antioch Community Exhibition is going on now through March 15. It's being held at the Crossings Event Center in Antioch, Tennessee. We have art on display from not just the community, but several of our students from Antioch High School, and the really great thing about this, and unfortunately, I didn't get to go to the opening, but last year, they had an opportunity for you to use a cue reader to listen to specific information from the students about their artwork. It's absolutely fantastic. So, if you get an opportunity, go out, please go out there. Again, it's from, it'll run now through March 15, and I believe, and she didn't give me the times on here, but I believe that it closes at like 7:00 in the evening or something like that, so I'll find out for sure. But, in any case, that concludes our announcements, and we'll move right into discussion. Dr. Register?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a number of people who will be presenting tonight on Common Core, and this was, this is a presentation that we planned based on requests from board members to get, to learn more about where we are in terms of implementation of Common Core. We've been in this process now for a couple of years and have not updated the board in a good bit of time, so you can see we've got a number of people here to participate in the presentation, and I'd like to recognize Dr. Steele to get us started and to carry forward in the meeting. Jay?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Register, and the board members. Tonight, we're going to be updating you on our progress of Common Core implementation. We've actually been at it for three years. This is our third year, and you're going to learn in a quick presentation, well, as quick as we can make it on Common Core, about everything that we've done leading up to this time. And before we get into it, why Common Core? Tonight, we're going to walk you through our efforts to prepare all teachers in MNPS for implementation of new standards called Common Core. So, I want to start off by saying that standards are not curriculum. Curriculum is designed by the teachers and built on standards. The Common Core are the standards. There's been a lot of talk that teachers will lose their freedom, they'll lose their creativity, their innovation. We see it exactly the opposite. So, curriculum is designed by the teachers and built on the standards. Teachers have full creative power to design relevant curriculum infused with deep inquiry and active student engagement built on these new standards. The standards are a roadmap. However, the teacher-generated curriculum is the vehicle to get our students ready to compete internationally. The standards are designed to be robust and relevant to the real world, reflecting the knowledge and skills that our young people need for success in college and careers. With American students fully prepared for the future, our communities will be best positioned to compete successfully in the global economy. We have to teach in a completely new way, focused on mastering skills and working through problems instead of rote memorization. That is a shift. Our standards have to be more rigorous and our expectations higher if our students are ever going to be able to compete in this global society. The Common Core standards will ensure that teachers teach and students learn the knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of today and tomorrow, including communication skills, perseverance and problem-solving, technical reading and writing, literacy across disciplines, and the most important mathematical skills. Is MNPS ready? According to last week to one of the national advisors from the Annenberg Institute, MNPS is the most-prepared district I have encountered in my work across the United States. You have a system in place that is preparing every teacher for Common Core. That was, Dr. Register was in the room, and several of us were in the room when this statement was made, after listening to our teachers from all tiers, our coaches, our librarians, and our district office personnel. So, that, no matter what you might hear in the community, we are prepared, and our teachers are prepared, and we've built a system for the last three years to prepare every teacher in this district. So, we started three years ago preparing our teachers and administrators. We have done intensive training and invested in our teachers and administrators. We use project-based learning as the catalyst for teachers to begin designing active curriculum that stimulates a child's natural curiosity. PBL requires that projects are built on rigorous standards with a driving question that draws on prior knowledge and a need-to-know. Students have a voice and choice in their demonstration of mastery, and the public audience reinforces the inquiry and work of both the students and the teachers. This sounds like Common Core. We've been intentional in our planning, methodical in our deconstruction of the standards, and forward-thinking with the use of differentiated professional development, SchoolNet, and the use of technology. And this has been one of the first projects that we have been working across the departments with inside the school district to ensure that our teachers are prepared, they have the tools, they have the resources, and they have the skills necessary to fully implement Common Core next year. So, tonight, you're going to hear from the curriculum team, from Leadership and Learning, as well as three teachers. I'm proud of their work, and Phil, we are ready. So, tonight's presenters are soon-to-be Dr. Kelly Henderson, the Executive Director for Secondary Instruction; Dr. Dave Moore, who is the Executive Director for Elementary Instruction; Jill Flaherty, the Director for Secondary Curriculum and Instruction; Dr. Nathan Lang, the Director for Elementary Curriculum and Instruction; behind me, Dr. Tammy Lipsy, the Director of Literacy; Sarah Spanos, a ninth-grade language arts teacher from McGabbic High School and an MNPS Common Core trainer; Christian Dennison, an eighth-grade math teacher from Wright Middle School and a state Common Core trainer; and Lauren Burns, a third-grade teacher at Sylvan Park Elementary and an All-Star trainer. So, Kelly's going to start by giving us a broad work, or an overview of our work over the past three years. The teachers will provide a classroom point of view of the instructional shifts and the work of teachers and the readiness of teachers, and then Dr. Lipsy will be providing a snapshot of what this looks like in our K-12 literacy plan. So, Ms. Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Register, and the board for allowing us to share our journey.
Yeah, either use that mic or go to the podium. Either one is fine.
Yeah, of course. I'm a former CTE teacher, and we called our kids not to stand behind the podium.[1075.13][1075.13](Laughter).
They just need a microphone.
So, I can do that. The first thing I want to do is to take you back to the very first time that we spoke with you all, and it was actually in September of 2012, and during that time, we shared with you the state timeline, and nothing's changed about the timeline. And I want to point out that we are on the third, the third piece of this journey where our teachers have implemented 3 through 12, well, really, K through 12, the ELA standards, but we're still implementing partial math, and that is because we're still testing some SPIs at the math grade level. Next year, full implementation, and that's what we're prepared for. So, during that first work session in September, we shared with you the training that had taken place, and I'm not going to read this, but you do have the PowerPoint in your notebook inside the front pocket, so you can look at the training that we did describe to you at that point. We also shared with you the next phase of our journey, which was developing that systemic curriculum framework, and we are actually in Phase 4. And so, if you look at your, in your notebook behind Tab 1, you can see the work that we've done over the last two years. The first thing we did was we took our coaches and our teachers through the deconstruction process. And just to make sure that you understand what the deconstruction process is, it is identifying the concepts and skills, that which we want students to know and be able to do, and key identifiers, which are the grade-specific learning outcomes. And through that process, we developed learning targets. We added specificity to each one of those deep, broad standards. We've added instructors' notes for teachers in case they have questions about the standard and what they need and how they need to teach, and we've identified key vocabulary, which we have learned is extremely important for our students, but especially important on the PARC test. Throughout this process, we have developed our curriculum framework, and behind Tab 1, again, you have a sample of scope and sequences for Grades 4, Grade 6, and then English 10...
Grade 7.
Oh, 7, sorry. Grade 7, and then English 10 and Algebra 1. So, you can look at that during your leisure time.[1242.33][1242.33](Laughter). Also, as a part of this curriculum framework, our coaches and teachers have developed some modeled units, and you will find those behind Tab 2. And that's where Grade 6 is, so Grade 3, Grade 6, and then English 10, model unit. And in a minute, I'm going to show you how SchoolNet is being used in the instructional planning process, and you can find these units also on SchoolNet. So, the type of training, or the training that we have conducted over the last two years, I'm not going to, again, read this to you, but you can look through the topics that we have provided in the ELA training, and if you want to understand what we're preparing our teachers for, behind Tab 3 are sample tasks. And we have designed the training to ensure that our teachers are able to provide the needed instruction for our students. On the next slide, again, math, the math topics that we have provided in our training. And I want to point out, at the bottom of that slide, where it says, "We're currently developing modules for identified content gaps," and, you know, we recognize the fact that some of our, the standards have shifted grade levels, and there are things that are being taught in grade levels that have never been taught before, there are things that are being taught in middle school that have never been taught before. So, we have gone through and identified where those content gaps will be, and we are in the process of developing modules, mostly online modules, that will help those teachers with those areas. And I've listed two, but please don't ask me to explain them because I am not a math teacher. But, one of those is helping our math teachers understand that they have to start teaching conceptually, and it's something that math teachers were never taught to do. So, that is one area that we have to focus our training. And again, you'll find some of those math tasks behind Tab 3. Another focus is the content literacy, especially in Grades 6 through 12, and again, you can see the list of topics that we have focused on. And if you look in the right column, where you see modules on text structures, patterns and features, author's purpose, bias, misleading, those aren't necessarily things that science and social studies and CTE teachers have ever really thought about before. So, we are building out modules to help them understand the importance of these pieces in literacy in science and social studies and CTE and art. And we're very excited about the fact that these, that all of this training that we are offering is being developed and offered by our school-based coaches, lead coaches, coaches, and our teachers. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the All-Star training because we have an All-Star trainer with us tonight who's going to share more information, so this is just a brief overview, reminding you that the All-Star training, the purpose of it was to put technology into teachers' hands for the purpose of differentiation. There are eight online modules, and Lauren is going to give you some more information about those a little later. 170 trainers, and teachers can decide. It's personalized, and they can decide how they want to be trained. So, one of the biggest shifts that we are helping teachers with, and that is the move to unit planning, shifting away from that individual daily lesson plan that the current standards moved us to. And so, to help teachers understand how to develop those long-range plans, Module 8 is dedicated to helping teachers with unit planning. Every Friday between March and August, Martin will be open for teachers to come and be assisted by our coaches and our teachers who are already working with that process, and we have provided them with a planning process and a template, and you can find those in the beginning, the front page behind Tab 2. That's the process that we're using. Also, our demonstration classrooms, where we have teachers, teaching teachers, that's where you can see unit planning in action. You can find more about our demonstration schools behind the last tab. I know I'm going fast, but I want to get to our teachers, so, but behind the last tab, you'll see some PD resources. So, three years ago, we were very strategic in thinking about how are we going to, what do we want our classrooms to look like with Common Core? And we made the move to train our teachers in project-based learning. And one of the things that is very important to me is that teachers do have the flexibility and the ability to create and design their own lessons, and Common Core, I mean, project-based learning does that. It also allows teachers to facilitate inquiry. It allows teachers to set up students to do deep search for meaning, craft reasoned arguments. It creates conditions for teachers to teach students to learn how to persevere, because they're not individual lessons. It's a project that's over three to four weeks. Research is involved. It's an integrated process. It provides relevance to the standards. In other words, like Jay said earlier, it sounds like Common Core. And so, we are very excited that, you know, we're in the second year of our three-year implementation, and we feel that it's going well. One of the things that our teachers are recognizing is that when they develop a project, they're developing a unit.
So, let me say on project-based learning, you are invited, let me get the date here, on March, is it 6?
6.
Okay, March 6, at Trebekka University, is the Second Annual MNPS Expo, where our middle and high school kids, last year, we started with high school, this year, middle, and next year, elementary, will be involved. And it is turning into a huge expo, where over 200, over 300 students' projects were submitted, and I think about 278 will be on display that day. These are teams of kids who have collaborated on a project with their teachers and their community, and they're going to showcase their work that night. If you want to be a judge, you can judge between 9:00 and 1:30, and there are options for you if you can't stay the whole day. You could be a judge for an hour or two. You can contact Kelly or Todd Wiggington. Todd's in charge of this project, this expo. But, if you just want to come and see it, 3:00, it's open to the public, and it is impressive to see. I'm going to have the secondary principals' meeting on-site that day, so at 3:00, they will also, the principals will be going through it and seeing the work and talking with the kids about their projects. That is one of the components of PBL. It's called a public audience. So, you are invited.
So, SchoolNet, you've heard a lot about the purchase of SchoolNet, and so I want to share with you how SchoolNet is going to be used in the planning process. And this graphic has also been provided to you, and it's behind Tab 2. But, this is where the teachers are going to access the scope and sequence. This is also where they can access a repository of resources, and we know that because this is new, it's going to take us several years to build a robust repository. But, right now, our coaches, school-based coaches, are working hard to make sure that teachers have access to resources. This is also where they're going to view their model lessons, and as they do that, that's going to give them resources to bring to collaboratively plan with their content team, because teachers hear me say all the time that planning should never be done in isolation, and it needs to be done in a teamed process. So, they will actually create their unit plans on SchoolNet, and, which means they can have access to them from anywhere, because you can access SchoolNet from home, from school, from the beach, wherever you have access to the Internet. And then, the great thing about the unit plans and what SchoolNet is going to provide us is that the teachers can promote their unit plan to the school level, so that they can share their unit plan with the rest of the building. And then, they have the option of promoting that unit plan to the district level, so it becomes a part of the repository. And so, also behind Tab 2, at the very end, we have... And so also behind tab two, at the very end, we have provided you with the vetting documents, our feedback documents that we will use in order to determine whether it's a unit plan that we want to give other teachers access to. And then we'll be able to give teachers feedback. And the team that will be doing that are our school-based lead coaches and our school-based coaches. So we just wanted to give you an update on where we are with SchoolNet and how it's going to be used. So last, before I turn this over to the teachers, I just want to share some numbers with you. And that is the number of teachers trained in this district. In 2011 and '12, we trained over 2,000 teachers in MNPS training, Common Core training. In 2012 and '13, over 4,300 teachers had face-to-face training in MNPS Common Core training. 2013, '14, this school year, we've trained face-to-face over 800, but we've made sure that we have more job embedded, that we're not pulling teachers out, and that through our network of trained principals, assistant principals, and coaches, a lot of that training is happening within the building. We have, all of our administrators have been trained on the deconstruction process. They understand what these teachers and coaches have gone through and the importance of deconstruction and adding specificity to the standards. All of our administrators and coaches have been trained on the continuous improvement model using the informational text standards. We have approximately 1,500 teachers that have gone through PBL training. And we're, again, in the second year of that, and we're also about three months from having a total of 32 trained trainers in this district. And then last, we do have 20 state Common Core coaches that we can draw upon to provide training within the district. And we've had about a little over 1,200 teachers take, or participate in the state training. So I just wanted to provide you with the number of teachers that have participated in training. So I am actually going to turn this over to our teachers. Jay introduced them a few minutes ago, but this is the order in which they will be speaking to you tonight. And it's Sarah Spanos, McGavick High School, ninth-grade ELA teacher, and she was also one of our MNPS trainers. And then Christian Dennison from Wright Middle School, and she has also been a state Common Core trainer. I think she spent this weekend in training at McGavick with the State Department. And then last will be Lauren, Sylvan Park, third-grade teacher, All-Star trainer, and she'll have some exciting news about the All-Star modules. So I want to turn it over to Sarah.
And if you guys will use that microphone, please. Yes, it should be. So Common Core implementation at the high school level specifically for English teachers, that's definitely changed the way that we do our unit planning, our instructional design. The ninth-grade English teachers, we've been using the PARC framework for the last two years, and just looking at knowing that we're headed that way, we wanted to go ahead and get our feet in and really try it out. And one of the things that we noticed immediately is that English teachers are used to sticking with thematic units, or I really like this book, so I'm going to teach a unit about this book. And instead, the PARC framework really shows us that you need to embed the different standards all the way through. So instead of having just a research project unit, at the end of the school year, you're doing research the whole school year. Your standards are cyclical, and they spiral through every grade level. So we're not just checking them off the list and going on to the next one. We're using those standards over and over. They definitely have increased the level of critical thinking that our students have to do, and that hasn't been easy for them or for us, but we're definitely getting there. And there's more balance among the standards. Instead of spending a lot of time just on literature, we now know we have to spend a lot more time on informational text and on speaking and listening, and those are skills that they have to have to move on and to be successful outside of school. When it comes to designing assessments, really the standards-based gradebook has worked very well with Common Core. If you were to open up my gradebook on grade speed, you would see, instead of categories of tests and quizzes and projects and essays, the categories are my standards. So I know immediately by looking at my gradebook where my students are at with the different standards. Maybe they're struggling in writing, but they're doing okay with informational text. So that helps the students and the parents also know what they need to work on. As far as the difference between the Common Core standards and where we were at with the Tennessee standards, the Common Core standards are definitely more broad, but I know that that was intentional. It's not this prescriptive list of the SPIs that we felt like we had to check one off the list and get through. And that's been a sigh of relief, I think, for a lot of us. But it's definitely ramped up the rigor for us. The PARC framework recommends that we spend 80% of our time writing analytically at the ninth-grade level and 20% on narrative, and I can tell you that we've never done that as English teachers. So that was a definite change that we had to get used to and try to get our students used to. We just took the MIST assessment last week, and that was all analytical writing. So that's a new thing that we're still working on, but that's where Common Core is pushing us, to get away from just summarizing, just telling a story, but to really look at what the argument of the author is and develop that well. And I know that's going to help my students be successful as they move on from ninth grade. So really, the impact on student learning is that it's more rigorous, they are challenged more, and they're rising to the occasion. I don't see a lot of students sitting around bored or not trying because there's always somewhere else for me to take them. And they definitely have really appreciated that the Common Core is giving them a more leveled playing field. When you present it to them, that this, we used to be really far down the list in terms of our rigor and how that was different for different places in the country. And now that it's a leveled playing field, they really seem to respond well to that.
Yeah, so we had a fun experience just the other day where we got to look at our new unit plans for next year for math. And this is the first time, I think, I've seen our teachers sit down, and we looked at these plans, and they were excited. And they said, "Look at how they've restructured this," because the past couple of years, we've been working with the standards, and we've seen what's been working, and we've seen what hasn't. And they're updating our scope and sequence to change it, and they're listening to what the teachers have to say. Our teams at school of teachers, we're collaborating together in our planning. Every Friday morning, I come in early before school to meet with my math teachers, and I'm excited about it. And that's something that didn't used to happen in the past with the old standards and the SPIs. You know, you felt like we had so much we had to cover, and it got really tedious trying to make sure we hit every single thing before this test. And now, the shift in focus is reaching the students at a deeper level with fewer items to check off. So we're able to say in math, you know, we're teaching these things in eighth grade because our kids in seventh grade were prepared because they went into detail on certain standards, and then in sixth grade. So they really build on each other, and that's something we didn't see with our old standards. And that's really helped us be able to change the way that we plan for our classroom instruction. Units are something that we have really shifted to this year, and it's made a big difference when I get up in the morning and say, "Okay, instead of trying to teach these three things today, I know where my kids were yesterday, and I know where I want them to be by the end of two weeks." And so we're able to have a more natural kind of flow in the way that we teach and design. And that definitely has changed our excitement level. It's also impacted the way that kids are seeing the curriculum. They see these connections that are being made. The math has the same eight math practices from kindergarten through high school. And these are math practices that aren't just about can you solve an equation? But the math practices are things like making sense of problems and persevering in solving them, constructing viable arguments, and critiquing the reasoning of others. It's communication skills. It's skills in being able to really reason through things and think critically through problems from kindergarten through high school. And it's those, you know, the math practices that we get to use, it's the excitement of the kids coming in and talking about math instead of sitting down and doing a bunch of problems. They come in and they get one problem, and then they collaborate to get it. And then we have a discussion amongst the classroom, and the kids get to see different pathways and solutions, and it's much more real life. The way we used to teach math was, can you do these skills? Yes, you can. Okay, let's move on to the next skill set. And now it's, can you solve these problems? Can you think critically when you're given a new situation? And I think that's really pushed our kids. And now, instead of coming in and feeling defeated, our kids are coming in and saying, "Well, what are we going to do today? How are you going to challenge us?" And they are rising to the occasion. She said, "Our kids, they're pushing back." Of course, they're going to push back because they're students. You know, we're making them think in ways they haven't thought in the past. But the way that they're pushing back, and I have kids actually debating and getting up in their chairs and standing up to argue about math. I mean, that's a really exciting thing as a math teacher, that our kids are that excited that they're going to argue about a math topic. You know, that's not something, and they're not arguing, they're arguing in a good way. They're using reasoning skills, and they're using mathematical vocabulary, and it's all being incorporated. And so I think that, while there are teachers who are nervous because it's new, I also think that we are getting very prepared. In our schools, we have math coaches or academic coaches in various subjects, and they know how to help us. And as teachers, we're helping each other. And I think we're all very excited with the new SchoolNet. We're going to be able to not only help teachers at our school, but we're going to be able to reach out to teachers at other schools. So I've done the state training, and I feel really confident in breaking down our eighth-grade standards. I'll be able to reach out to teachers in other buildings, not just my own building, and we'll all be able to kind of work together and to help each other and support each other. And with that collaboration, you know, and with the teachers being happier, the kids are going to see that, and they're going to start to collaborate. And I think, you know, on a whole, it's really bringing positive change. I see my kids being able to write more. I see them being able to read more deeply about things, and I see them being able to solve problems like they couldn't before. You know, we shifted our standards. So it's very exciting, and I think we're all really looking forward to what next year's going to bring.
Right. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the All-Star training. I went towards the meeting in February, spent two days learning about these modules. And as I was going through them, I thought, "I already do this. I already do this. I, did you, oh, we already do this." So the All-Star training is really a way for teachers to learn how the initiatives that we've already been taking are moving the district to PARC and to using Common Core. I created actually a Pachaka Chaw PowerPoint. After I went through my training and I read the toolkit, I have to present this to my faculty, and I thought, "This is not what I would say. I need to personalize this." So I personalized my learning with a Pachaka Chaw, which is a quick presentation of the most important points. So you have a copy of the PowerPoint that I made, it's also up here. So what is All-Star training? It is how Nashville will get to PARC. You're welcome. There is an accountability structure here. We have the teachers who are supported by the trainers, me. We have the trainers who are supported by the district coaches. The district coaches are then supported by John Williams and Keisha Ray. Then Jay Steele, Susan Thompson, and Fred Carr are the support for that group. And then at the base of our totem pole are Dr. Register and Ms. Hammer Centrist. So there is accountability here for each teacher, and it's not just someone at their school, it's district-wide. So we're bringing it all together here. The support that they receive will be from their trainer, that's a picture of me, and the coach, who I report to. And then there are eight training modules that each teacher will go through. For the training modules, I've gone through and kind of picked out what I thought were the most important things to talk about for the training modules. For Module One, it's the strategic plan. It's Education 2018. It shows the teachers how the initiatives that we've already been taking are moving toward PARC. It talks about transferring leadership, quality teaching, and using that equity and excellence that I heard earlier, along with personalized learning to reach growth, achievement, and empowerment for our students, which is really what we want anyway. Module number two, it's the productivity tools, and also talks about the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act. This module is important because it shows teachers where they can receive this tech information, how they can use it for their own productivity, as well as instruction in the classroom. Number three is our learning platform. This is what I am most excited about. It's using SchoolNet. So when the teachers take this module, they're learning how to use this SchoolNet. They're learning how to reach their resources. They're learning that everything is all in one spot, which is much easier than searching for scope and sequence, and searching for this, and searching for that. So when I took this module, I thought, "Yay! This is great. Everything is all in one spot." It also talks about our learning management, which is very important as a teacher. Everything must be planned, everything must be managed. So in this learning module, we learn about Blackboard, how to organize our student learning as well as our own. And we get to navigate through Blackboard as instructors when we take these modules. So that's helpful. We also learn about Edmodo and ClassDojo. The Edmodo, I equate to like a Facebook for your class. It's a way for students and teachers to connect privately, to have common threads of discussion, to share work, to be able to get instant feedback. The ClassDojo, I use in my class because I am elementary school. I love it. It's a motivational tool that gives points and demerits to my students. They don't know what demerits they get if I don't publicize stuff, but they are motivated by the ding sound that goes off when they get a Dojo point. I love this program as well because the kids have access at home, and so do the parents. So all three of us know what's going on, and that just goes back to our blended learning, our feedback. The next module is implementing Common Core. This is where I think most teachers are having the most reservation. How do I do this? But this module tells us how. It gives us strategies, it gives us support. It also gives just basic concepts of Common Core. Number five, that module was my favorite. I looked at it like three or four times. It talks about blended learning. It's how do we use this technology that we learned about in Module Three, that we learned about in Module Six? How do we use these things in our classroom? It's watching a video, creating a project, and then posting it on Edmodo for feedback, or learning through a Pachaka Chaw PowerPoint, and then going to the thing on March 6th. That's a perfect example of blended learning. Number six, online assessment and readiness. That helps teachers see what's the PARC framework. It helps us sort of understand the difference between formative and summative assessment in ways that we can really use that assessment to guide our instruction. It also helps for us as teachers to see the types of questions we might encounter, or our students might encounter, on the PARC, which, again, leads us to our instruction and our assessment. Number seven is the response to intervention and instruction. This helps our teachers understand what are the components of these things, and also how to use the universal screener, which will be AIMS Web. And the last is the unit plan. This is the coup de grace. This is where we are finally able to take everything we've just learned and put it into practice. It's our teacher PBL. It's our project-based learning. So, oh, there we go. There are lots of ways to train for these modules. You can do it at home, you can do it at school, you can do it at the Martin Center, you could even do it at Starbucks or church. You can do a blend of any of these. You could do it with your colleagues, you can do it by yourself. It's personalized just for you. You also get a personal laptop after completing your unit plan, and after three years, you are able to purchase it for a dollar, which is nice. So all of these things, as I was going through them, I thought, "This might seem a little overwhelming." But again, each module I took, I thought, "I do this already." So these modules are just sort of building confidence for the teachers who are taking them, and they're able to see, "Okay, I use this. I can do this. We do brain power. So now, I'm going to push it a little bit farther." So I feel like the modules are a way for our teachers to gain a little bit more confidence and are pushing our students towards Common Core. These are helping our teachers be ready. It's really amazing. I was happy to be part of it.
Thank you very much. I'm glad that she introduced the Pachaka Chas to you. I couldn't really concentrate to say that word. I first saw that in action at a conference in Philadelphia, and I immediately text Dr. Keisha Ray and says, "This has to be incorporated. I want everybody to learn this method of presentation." It's a six-minute presentation, and the slides are 20 seconds each. So we took, we kind of modified a little bit because the one slide with all the monitors. Six-minute slides, six-minute slides, six minutes with 20 seconds. And communities around the world are doing Pachaka Chaw nights with kids. And we actually have a And we actually have a society here in Nashville, pachaka, I can't even say it yet. Pachaka society. So it's a way that, it tells stories. It's a Japanese word. Now Dr. Lipsy is going to share, not a pachaka.
I don't know if I can follow that.
How this comes together to supplement and enhance our K-12 Literacy Plan. What she's going to share with you is our focus for 2014-15. We feel these components will move our literacy scores and prepare our students to become successful readers and writers. All components of this plan will be addressed in the upcoming budget and then we hope you'll support that.
Good evening. I don't know if I can follow that or not, but I'll try. First, this first page, I want to talk to you just about some things that we have in place already and then some things that we're going to try to scale up. So if you look on the first page, you're going to see that we have two new reading series. We have one that is a K-6 and it's called Journeys. Yes, that's it. And then Prentice-Hall Literature is for our seventh and eighth grade students. I'm also giving you just a little bit of direction, how we tie these back to Dr. Register's Strategic Plan. Both textbooks are Common Core-aligned, they're rigorous in their instructional design, they all have digital learning tools and mobile apps, they have some interactive whiteboard, kind of like what they call grammar snaps. And there's scaffolding and differentiation in every lesson in these texts. They're authentic, they have what we call anchor text, and children are taught how to do close reads. What I think is really important to know about this text is that it, both texts work on something called the six, super-six comprehension strategies. And those are things like making connections to text, summarizing text, inferring, predicting. If you go out to the Harvard Reading Study Habit site, you'll see that freshmen, in the freshman class, do those same strategies. And we're starting that in our kindergarten year. So it has a lot of meat to this text. We had 70% of our state adopt this text. It does follow what we call a balanced literacy framework in our K-6 as closely as it can. So that's the first support we have in place. We got that in August, we're continuing to do some training. There's something called Think Central, which is our digital piece. We're rolling out a lot of that through different ways, what we call Brain Sharps, which are like five-minute, 10-minute video clips so teachers can learn at home, they can learn in their PLCs and in their grade level meetings. So we have that in place. The second thing that we've had around since 2008, and some people say it's our best-kept secret, is we have what we call District Reading Clinics. We have, we presently, we started with one in 2008 and every year we've added four. We're at 23 right now, they're all around the city. And they are, it's a one-to-one model, it's research-based, it's by, it's five easy steps, it's 30 minutes. They're run by our community volunteers. If you want to see it, we have about 1,000 people in that project right now. If you want to see it in any school, we'd love to let you come and observe. We've had lots of folks do that. That's in fact the way I met Dr. Register in 2008, in a district reading clinic at McKissick. That was where our very first one started and it was founded by TSU. So we had our TSU students working in the very, very first clinic. Does have some goals there, provides instruction, and it increases our student performance in reading. It's also, it's easy to learn, it's five easy steps. And we always tell our volunteers, it'll be the best part of your day to come in, sit next to a boy or a girl who needs help in reading. Like I said, we have about 1,000 people, we have community volunteers, we have faith-based organizations, we have corporations all over the city that work in those district reading clinics. Right now, they're in a lot of our high-poverty schools. I have two voice messages since I've been sitting here from two principals asking how can they get a reading clinic in their school. So that's something we already have in place. The third piece here is transforming our coaching. We also have a small amount of this going on right now in two of our schools. We're using a literacy collaborative coaching model and we're doing that at Ross and at Glengarry and we've gotten a lot of great feedback. It's really a three-pronged coaching model where it's intensive training around balanced literacy framework. We're asking to scale that up. Lipscom as a partner with us, they helped us design the very first one, going to come back and design again for additional 30 schools. And that is in, that's an intensive coaching model. It's 40 hours and they earn a certificate from Lipscom. They can also do it for college credit if they prefer to do that. We're not offering to pay that, but that is also in there. Then on the back page, we have ways that we're looking at our subgroups in early prevention. And the very first one you'll see there is that we're scaling up reading recovery. We would like to hire 24 new reading recovery teachers and use six existing folks that we have right now. We'd like to use those to place two in every one of our 12 priority schools, 11 to 12. We're going to announce those schools, they're to be announced, to be decided. And then to support the six that are on the floor right now, some continuing education, they'll remain in their present schools. Reading recovery, many people see that as an intervention, that they work with a few amount of students, but that's not really accurate. In the morning time, they work with what we call four critical care students. And then in the afternoon, they run something called maintenance groups. So they can see as many as 40 students a week. I just left Julia Green this week and I was observing Joe Littlejohn, who's a reading recovery teacher at that school, it's paid for by the PTO or PTA. She sees 70 students in a year. So there's a lot of different ways that you can do that. It's a support, it's a foundational support for our first graders to begin with and then our maintenance groups, our first graders and second graders. I also gave you just a little bit about the latest study that's come out around reading recovery and you can see that, I've given you the local cost of it, also a little bit, it got the highest rating of 175 intervention programs across the United States. So 12 to 20-week, high-intensive reading recovery model. The next one is what we're going to try to do at the middle schools. We'd like to, middle and high. And that's to scale up something called Read 180 System 44. It's very similar to a balanced literacy framework, but it's done in a middle school. We are doing this in 12 of our schools right now. We have some challenges with that, we're working through those challenges. But we also have principals that are calling every day for cost estimates on this. This will provide intervention to middle schoolers and high schoolers. So we are asking to do that in our, it's called Read 180 Next Generation. System 44, it's more of a foundational piece for students that are reading below a second grade. If you want to learn more about that, you can go out and actually Google Read 180 and go through a module and you will be very impressed with. It comes with what we call a leveled bookroom. It's middle school literature that kids are interested in. We're getting feedback from principals. If you want to see that in action, Bailey is a great place to see that in action right The other thing we have here, I have here, are hiring 15 lead interventionists. Those are 120-day folks that'll, some of them will be leaving us and some that we would really like to hang on to and then add to that. They'll learn a model called Comprehensive Intervention Model. And it's a model out of Arkansas, it's Linda Dorn's work, they're doing a six-state study right now. It's intensive, it's not coming in and working with a group of students without a plan. This is a plan around four different components of reading. Comprehension, reading, word study, and what they call guided reading plus. So a child is working through another text level and they're also working on fluency at that time. We would train those people in those 120-day interventionists in that model. And then the last thing is something that we're often asked about and get lots of requests concerning our leveled bookrooms and adding to our leveled bookrooms. So we have in our proposed budget, six to improve and increase the number of leveled readers we have in six of our schools' leveled bookrooms.
Thank you, Dr. Lipsy. Now we'll open it up to questions to anybody on the panel or anybody in the room. Dr. Gentry, we'll start at your end. Any questions? Dr. Brenner?
I'm just glad to see the literacy being moved up and down with the education of all students and from K through 12. Wonderful. Now there's no excuse.
Right. It's adding a foundation that we have really truly needed, but then also, it's really looking at our subgroups. We tried to look across all subgroups with this plan.
We also had another, we can share with you electronically. The entire K-12 Literacy Plan has been completely aligned with the Strategic Plan and the goals and activities have been placed in it. It was just, it's too big to, for, you don't need to look at it as a comprehensive guide, you need to, as a teacher, you pull out the pieces that pertain to your classroom. But it is completely aligned with the Strategic Plan now.
Glad to see the title reading recovery.
Yeah.
Ms. Barron?
Yes, I think this is very exciting and did you say that the 23 reading clinics, the literacy collaborative is at 30 schools?
30 schools.
Right now or it will be?
No, it's presently at two schools. It's at Ross and we're working with Georgia State right now to do some training and with Lipscom. We actually have the one that is at Ross is one of our literacy coaches, been trained by Georgia State. The other one is, has been, is being trained by a Lipscom professor, but she also received her training from Georgia State. It's similar to the literacy collaborative model, but it's, we're designing it to be more aligned with Common Core and with our RTI.
And the University of Record will be Lipscom. It has to be a university with reading recovery in this model. So Lipscom has agreed to do that.
And give us the state grant.
Yes. That sounds exciting. Question that I have is, where's a special activity in here? Do we have a segment that's just not presented yet or is that to come?
Well, in our reading clinics, we do not hold any child out of a reading clinic. So we're seeing students in the 23 schools that could be, could have an IEP. Then in addition to that, in the maintenance groups, they could come in in maintenance groups and the intervi, I'm sorry, not in reading recovery maintenance groups, they would be in the interventionists, would be in the interventionists, in the 15 schools with that. Also, in our literacy plan and in our text, we also have intervention in there for below-level readers, below-level reader plans. So there is some support there as well.
Great. And I've been, I got permission from UJ before I've been saying this, but it's my understanding that with this comprehensive literacy program, we can expect that when it's fully implemented, all children will want to read in elementary school and they will not be going to middle school not able to read. That's our goal.
Well, of course, that is our goal and that's why we're focusing so much of the resources in the elementary level to catch them early. Of course, we'll have kids in movement at all levels and we'll leave interventions. Ms. Shepard?
I have a couple for Dr. Lipsy. You said that you were experiencing some challenges with the Read 180 System 44 model. What are some of those challenges that you're experiencing with that?
Well, in the high school double-blocking classes, that's been a challenge for us. Also having a reading assessment so that we can quickly identify those children before they get plugged into classrooms before the school year starts. We also have some challenges with putting the right teacher in that classroom, the training of that. And we are, as quickly as we can, we have two coaches from Special Education Department that are driving the city, helping with that. And then we also have an actual Read 180 trainer that is going out and working with those teachers where the model is not to its purest. And we want that to be up to speed very quickly.
Hannah, when you talked about the six-level bookrooms, where are those currently located?
Well, every elementary school and middle school have a leveled bookroom right now. If you were a reading first school, elementary reading first school, when reading first was here, you have a lot of materials because that grant paid for those. Then we have some that have, some elementary schools that have meager amounts of materials for a leveled bookroom and for guided reading.
So this would just implement their materials that they found or don't?
It would enhance what they have.
Thank you.
Mr. Pinkston?
Thank you. Thank you for the information. Really thanks especially to the teachers who are here tonight, Ms. Fano, Ms. Disson, Ms. Burns. I've heard a lot of teachers, had the privilege of hearing a lot of teachers, a lot of country talk about standards and what it's doing, change instructional practice and you guys are as passionate and as inspired and as inspiring as anybody I've heard, so you're our heroes. So thanks for being here. The question I've got is really for anybody at the table, Dr. Steele as well, what are our implementation gaps that remain at this point? And then also, I know that the conversation around the country is really moving toward, you know, where is there a lack of, or abundance of aligned instructional materials, lessons came, textbooks and whatever. So I'd just love to hear kind of what the remaining gaps are and what our plan is for dealing with alignment of materials.
I'll ask the team here, Tom, any of you.
One of the gaps that we're having with some of the teachers, the microphone.
I only say that because I get into big trouble with some people if they can't listen to them.
I understand, thank you. One of the gaps that I feel like we're having are new teachers who've come in. We did some really extreme intensive training early on, but that's where the modules for the All-Star Training really come into play because we have the Common Core training that we provided in those modules. So I really believe that's going to help a lot. And one of the other things that will help with our gaps, like our teachers have said, our buildings have well-trained teachers in them. So the collaborative planning that is structured in their days really helps bridge some of those gaps that we see. But when we have new teachers move in from states or from districts who have not been as eager to implement Common Core and get ahead of the eight ball as we have been, making up those grounds has been a little challenging sometimes, but through that collaborative planning time, that's really helped with that. One of the, you asked about resources. Where are an abundance of resources that are aligned and will help us prepare? There are not as many as we'd like, you know, we're still on the ground floor of a lot of this. But we, in coaches' meetings and even today when we have our secondary coaches' meetings, we're constantly sharing resources that we find, that they find, that they can share with each other. Achievetcore.org is one of, it's an excellent resource, has great videos, things our coaches and our teachers can use in many PDs in their buildings with their teams. They can look at videotaped lessons as a teacher delivers some instruction to get other ideas. The Buck Institute of Education website is filled with wonderful resources about project-based learning that are Common Core-related. The 10 Core website is another good one. Engage New York is another one. So there are resources out there that we constantly share and I'm going to let them speak to some of the bayers.
Yeah, as a teacher, we've been doing this, we focused on Common Core in my school last year and again this year. So what we found is a strength of the Common Core standards is that they're doing this across the country. So what we might not have in Tennessee yet, we've been able to reach out to other teachers in other places that have, so if I can't find something I need on functions, I can go and look at this and find things from other states that have put this online already. And the internet sharing that we're going to be able to have with this new computer modules we're doing is going to be fabulous. modules we're doing is going to be fabulous because our school might plan an awesome unit on how to do systems of equations that we can now share with all the middle schools. And then if we're saying, oh, we really need something to teach this data standard, like with this unit we're struggling with, we'll be able to go online and look and see what other schools are doing and very quickly find those resources. So that's what the school net, I think, is really going to change for us, is that it's all going to be in one place now and so we won't have to spend as much time. And I also think, you know, changing the standards isn't something where on day one we're going to walk in and know everything. You know, it's going to be a process, but we have the people in the schools so that we can interact with the standards. We go back, we talk about what went well, we talk about what we need to change. And then we continue to do this on a daily basis and on a weekly basis. And that's what the models of collaboration are really helping us to do and to feel better about doing. So I think that any gaps that we're finding in teachers who aren't feeling confident, that's where we're going to close those gaps, is through working together in the school buildings at the school level. And not just having one big training for everyone, but having consistent trainings that are happening throughout the school years.
Another area, we have redesigned the role of the librarian. We felt that that was an underutilized resource in every school. So we've moved the librarians under Dr. Ray and she has been shifting them to an instructional designer approach, training them heavily in Common Core, the technology that's needed to truly implement Common Core. So we are seeing that those who have the skills and embrace that are doing terrific things and those that are lacking in those skills and need to assist a more professional development, that is a gap. So that's one person in the building that we feel we want everything to go through aligned with Common Core. And the other one, and I'll briefly touch on this one, I don't want to get in this discussion too long, there's not a lot of item banks or formative assessments that are aligned with Common Core yet. So we feel this summer we're going to spend with teachers creating our own aligned with each benchmark in math and ELA at every grade level. And we want the teachers to create them and they're short formatives that they can pull and they can use when they need to assess the student's learning. So that is a gap right now.
I think Ms. Bass, you were going to say something?
I would like to add that I get catalogs from publishers all the time. I love to buy books from different publishers, see what other things are out there, and there's really not much at the high school level for Common Core. Pretty much everything stops at grade eight. But I can say that the adoption of our new English textbook is Common Core aligned. Common Core is on every single page. So that has made working with Common Core a lot easier, even for the new teachers coming in. It's right there in front of them, they can't ignore it. The students see it right there. So that has helped.
That's right. I mean, I know the publishers are flooded market and stuff, it's damn Common Core. The fact that you guys are helping lead with the starting eyes is excellent. I just have one follow-up question for Ms. Burns at Silver Park. So third grade, I don't know what subject you teach, but I'd like to know that for my life maybe that third grade math, under the Tennessee standards, were, they were like 120 something third grade math standards and now it's down to like 20 something. And talk for a minute about what that simplification has meant, whether it's your subject or anybody else's kind of, is that typical, that narrowing and maybe being a focus also?
It is. And we're self-contained, so I run the gamut all day of everything. But as far as math standards go, it actually has sort of been a relief for me and my students because we can spend more time, you know, there are certain things, especially in third grade, like elapsed time, that's really abstract, it's hard to grasp. So the fact that I have some extra time to really go in depth with that is great. The geometry standards, now instead of, okay, it's polygons and this and this and this, ready, go, do something else, I have a chance to say, okay, now that we've learned all of these things, let's build a GeoCity. So I have a deeper understanding with my students of why things happen and how we use them. And my parents have said, you know, that's funny how you teach multiplication because I don't do any rote memorization. We just learn, you know, this three times seven is 21 because not three times seven is 21, move on. Like we really are able to go more in depth. And for math, I feel like that's really important because it does move so quickly.
That's true. Mr. Pinkston, one of the things on that that we found in elementary, the challenge is mathematics. We, almost all of us have backgrounds in reading and writing. Math is a real challenge. PD 360 has been a real help. We have actual videos, five to seven to 10-minute videos we can watch teachers teaching Common Core so you can begin to see the depth and that's available in every one of our schools. And that's part of embedded professional development that can either be led with the coach or with a group of teachers.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hayes? Ms. Burns?
Well, first of all, I'm excited about a lot of things I've heard tonight and Dr. Lipsy, I love to focus on literacy, I love the creative content, and I'm going to take you some of this here. I'm very excited to talk about that, I didn't know these things existed. And I was listening to a lot of the language that was used in the presentation. I heard a lot of terms that I like. I heard collaborative deeper learning, less box checking, critical thinking, challenge for students, less standards, all great. And I really appreciate hearing from the teachers because, you know, as a parent, I mostly hear from parents and I know people that are all across the spectrum on this issue. And so this is a very positive conversation, I was now full of whetling in on everything that we're talking about. But I do have some questions and I kind of like to talk about this and I think I'm a big part of why we're having this meeting tonight. And so I've been struggling with the idea of Common Core. I know, I think a lot of my concerns really are at the state level because we're there, we're implementing it, it's not really our choice. But I think the reason I've had concerns is because there are several aspects to Common Core and it gets complicated and complex as to what people are reacting to. So there are the standards themselves and then there are the assessments, which are the tests used to measure the standards. And then on top of that, we have implementations to deal with. And so we had this parent meeting last night, had a lot of discussion about testing and I listened to a lot of it and I think what parents are reacting to is more of this, I said this last night, sort of this national focus on over-testing and over-standardization right now. And in the effects of that, and we heard parents list their concerns about it or, you know, the possibility of narrowing, or it is happening, I think sometimes narrowing the curriculum, we're crediting creativity, you know, cutting out recess or enrichment activities through testing, cycling, teacher, all of it. And so all that stuff gets rolled into the Common Core debate, which really doesn't necessarily have to do with Common Core standards, which is what we're talking about. So I had a lot of concerns and I was going to run through them again, some of these are state level. And then I had a few questions I think probably can answer at the district level. So the concerns that I have read about with Common Core, if anyone wants to address any of this, are the supported lack of field testing and teacher input in development of Common Core, lack of transparency around the development of the standards. I've read a lot about whether the standards are developmentally appropriate for young children who may need more, or definitely need more imaginative display and less academic focus.
Okay, hold on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You got a whole list over there. Let's take them one at a time, that way you can get your questions answered.
I don't know, okay, that's fine. You want to go through, if you want to respond, we go back. Field testing, the teacher input and the transparency of development, if you make any comments. Again, I think some of these are like national or state issues, I don't know that, you know, our staff.
They were already developed when they were handed.
Right. Yeah.
That's why we chose project-based learning. I'm going back to one of your early comments about the creativity and the fun for kids. Is this removing fun for kids? Is it all about the academic preparation? I don't think so. And we chose project-based learning to make sure that that is embedded. I mean, I come from the arts background. I like being creative and I get very bored when I can't be creative. I like innovation, innovative people and when a teacher can capture the imagination of a child and spark that curiosity, it's usually done through a project. It's not done in rote memorization, it's not done in repetition and regurgitation of facts, even though some kids do like that, not many of us, but some kids do like that. There's a place for those kids. The project-based learning is that hook that will hopefully inspire kids if the projects are designed right. And that's why we spent so much time working with teachers to really create in-depth projects that are involved in the community, that are relevant to their kids', the kids' lives and things that they care about. And that is a shift when people are redesigning curriculum and that approach and how kids learn and demonstrate that mastery. That's why we went with PBL first, before we introduced Common Core. And I think we're seeing the benefits of that. And come on March 6th and you'll see some kids who are really excited about their work. And next year we'll add elementary and I bet they'll blow us away with their creativity.
And again, a lot of these issues really might have to do with a lot of good testing more than Common Core. And then, do you remember I responded about the rolling, well, this came up last night too, rolling.
Yeah, a couple of things there with that, simultaneously with this, also with elementary, middle and high school, working with social emotional learning, providing these opportunities that I believe Mrs. Shepherd spoke about. Opportunities for children to work, collaborate. You're looking for three things in schools and in life. You're looking for a sense of belonging, a sense of significance and a sense of fun. Those pieces are present and as, with life, that's part of that. And then there are opportunities to delve into, inquire, to research, but then you come back up with activities and as Dr. Steele said, with project-based learning, the other piece that's part of this instruction is technology. That's pretty fun. I mean, with 29 nieces and nephews and looking at devices, they consider that pretty much fun. And here we are providing this opportunity across K-12, across this district. So I do think that's the feedback that I'm able to get.
If it's designed and delivered correctly.
Yes, thank you.
I also think one of the things is that when we look at these standards and they're worded, very complex language. And so you take a moment, you look and you kind of are like, whoa. And then you break it down and you really look at what it's asking and it's not asking for something that is developmentally inappropriate. They've taken like the math and they've backwards designed from high school and they've got to say, what do they need to do at each grade level to be ready by the end of high school? And so yes, sometimes that does mean that you look at a first or second grade math standard and think, could a second grader really accomplish that? But if you look at what it's asking them to really do in the classroom, you can do that in a very hands-on way with a lot of creative and interactive discussion. And while the teacher's reading the standard, that's not what the student is looking at and being asked necessarily to be able to speak back to you. The standards are written for the teachers to read and to work with and then to interpret into their classroom in ways that make sense for their students.
I invite any of you, Sonia Stewart, Principal Pearl Cone, has an incredible AP English teacher that I've been in her classroom twice and witnessed the kids down on the floor working on a standard with whiteboards in collaborative groups. And I got down on the floor with them to learn what they were doing, very creative and fun and the kids don't want to learn any other way. And I'm seeing that all over this school district. And when it gets to that level, then I think that will ease parents' minds if it's designed and delivered right. And that's the creativity of the teacher.
And I think we need to communicate that better with our parents, that we take these standards and we rewrite them in ways that make sense to the kids. We use I can statements, or teachers write them in different ways where the students say, you know, I can explain the concept of division. And that's not what the standard says, but that's really what the student is doing. And so, and part of our unit planning is to take what these standards are and we break them down in what we call essential understandings and those are written in ways that the kids can embrace it and understand it. And I think we just need to communicate more effectively with our parents about what's happening with those.
Okay, so a couple other things. There, I think one of my hangups around the standards, the standards sound good to me, you know, overall, I think I'm working on the assessment part and the implementation. But the question is, because these are mandated, are they, as you say, the curriculum is not enforceable, but the question is, are they too rigid or enforceable or, you know, is that going to affect teacher autonomy or district autonomy as to how we?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I would say the standards are actually less rigid than what we had before. Because they're so much broader and go deeper, I have much more freedom to teach how I want to teach and to do the projects that I want to do in the classroom.
I want to speak to that really quickly with ELA. Looking at, when we sat down as a team, back, Sarah was on the team, we have teachers on the team at the high school level, coaches on the team, and we were looking at the standards and we were looking through websites of other states and what they had done. We saw that some states had prescribed exactly what pieces of literature they would read. They'd, oh, the recommended list in Common Core is the list we're going with. That is not what we as this district decided to do. We decided to leave teacher autonomy as a big key piece in that because we didn't want to say, you have to teach blank novel this nine weeks at this grade level. Now, as long as it fits the text complexity required at that grade level and you can scaffold the learning for your students and you understand that the complexity rubric and how to do that, and then we can vet that, we're okay with that. So teacher choice is huge. We did not want to say, you're doing this at this time. Because if you do that, you're also tying their arms on PBL. They can't get as creative and we did not want to be that. I was a classroom teacher for 16 years. I never wanted my hands tied and me told what I had to teach novel-wise or poetry-wise as long as I stayed within the spectrum that I needed to stay in for my grade level, my students. And that's what we expect of our teachers. And Sarah, you can speak to that as a teacher who's doing that.
So when we developed the scope and sequence, when the teachers and the coaches were sitting down doing that, we had to, we, not we had to remind them, but we created the scope and sequence for all teachers, just like we create instruction or create learning for all students. And that we had to keep in mind that there are teachers of all levels using this document. And so it's the communication piece that if we're creating this document for a brand-new teacher to pick up and use their first day in a classroom, that's why it's very detailed. But the communication piece is that this is the suggested pacing, it's not the pacing that is required, it's not prescribed. But yet for that brand-new teacher, there's some good information and some suggested pacing that they shouldn't have any issues following. And the suggested pacing also comes from the fact that we have a high mobility rate. And at any point, we have students who are moving from, you know, Maplewood to Stratford, back to Maplewood to White's Creek. And that scope and sequence provides that roadmap for the ELA teachers to follow so that that student is not missing any instruction as they are moving between schools.
Just real quick, I guess a simile and example, so the simile I've heard, kind of to be back to what Jill was saying, was that the Common Core is kind of like a building code. And so as architects, as we are designing houses, we have to follow the building code. We can design a house the way we want to do it. We can have two stories, we can have stucco, we can have siding. And so as teachers, we have to follow this building code, but we have the freedom to develop the house the way we want it to develop. As far as the standards themselves, I have an example as far as very great math standard, there was one of the math tasks that the state has come out with. And the interesting thing about this is there are so many different solution paths to the actual answer. So a student has that six different solution paths, they can take, they can draw it already, they can do an area model, they can do the foil method, they can decompose a number, they can do the distributor property. So no longer is it just this times this and you get the answer back. As long as I can justify for you and show you my solution path, then I am proficient or I'm master of the standard.
That's very important. That was my major concern really, I think that answers my question. And then, I'm sorry, I feel like a one-hopper, but I have a lot of questions. So the other issue is, so when they implemented this in New York, which maybe they, you know, like you're saying, we have a little bit different procedures here, but they had 70% of the children who quote failed. Only 5% of the students with disabilities passed and less than 20% of African-Americans and Hispanics passed. And so I'm a little concerned this might contribute to this narrative that we have all failing public schools or that, you know, that these tests are not being used financially but more the rights to teachers and students. And so I guess my question is, what happens if students fail here? I mean, do they move on or does they, do we have any plan in place for that? I'm sorry.
They don't have to pass the TCAP, they don't have to pass, but at the high school level, it is a percentage of their grade. So it could academically hurt their GPA or get scored low enough and the other grades that are figured into the grade were not high enough, they could fill that subject. That would be my best answer.
But that's also, we don't know the cut scores or any of that.
Sorry?
Well, so much of that is determined on state cut scores and that kind of stuff as well.
Which we?
Which we don't know and we haven't seen. And we do expect there to be a draw, I mean, anytime you change an assessment, because it's a whole new way. And looking at the sample park assessment and what they're able to do and what they are allowed to do and... are allowed to do, and the toolbars they can use, just getting them used to a different type of assessment, you're going to see a drop even if the content knowledge is there. So we do feel our teachers are prepared, we feel like they're preparing the students. But when you give them a completely different assessment, we are going to see, you know, a drop. And we need to very communicate, be very clear about, there is going to be a difference. And we expect that. But how it affects grades, I think it's partly going to determine on cut scores and Paul's stuff that got there, so Paul might speak to that.
Right, but we also need to talk about standards-based grading and the importance of that.
Go.
I just want to add that, again, this will only be a small percentage of the students' grade. But we do anticipate that with a significant change like this, that there will be some impact initially. I was with the state testing center when the TCAP writing assessment first came along. We had not been requiring students to do any kind of standardized writing assessment. And the scores were so low that first year that the commissioner didn't want the scores even released, they were below 25% proficient, or meeting a competency standard at that time. We adjusted to that. We learned what the tasks and the expectations were, and now we see, you know, over 75%, 8% statewide on that assessment. So I think it's a situation where there will be some impact initially because we haven't been asking students to do tasks this way, we haven't been asking these kinds of questions. But we will, you know, we will learn what the expectations are, and we will adjust.
So addressing individual students failing, you know, that's the importance of standards-based grading or grading for learning. And that is making sure that students are actually mastering standards and not necessarily grading them on homework or test. And also making sure that we have those support pieces in place, the interventions in place to catch them as they are not mastering standards. And so that's why the RTI model is important and our shift to standards-based grading is extremely important.
Christian wants to talk about her classroom assessments.
Another thing we've been doing is making our classroom assessments look different so that our classroom assessments are assessing the kid's conceptual understanding. So the kids are having to actually not just say that the answer is 12, but they explain how they got their answer and why it's 12, and what that means in the context of the problem. And they're doing that when we do our unit assessments. And so I think when they go to sit down and take Park, they're going, yes, it's going to be new, it's going to be computer-based or paper-based until we get the computers in place, but they're going to be more used to seeing that type of question. I've also looked, because I have about a third of my students who do have IEPs. So I have been very interested in how this is going to look for our special education students. And they do have modifications in place with the Park testing, and they're very individualized. They will be able to hear things read to them. But they also are going to interact with the questions in a different way, so that instead of just picking A, B, C, D, they are dragging and dropping things onto the screen, which is something they're used to doing in the way that they interact with technology outside of school. And so they're going to be able to be much more interactive with the assessment than what TCAP offers them now. So I think we're going to see actually more success for these students than we do on TCAP when it comes to assessing what they really know.
All right, I've got two more, and I'm going to stand very quickly. We've got a couple of other. I'm sorry, can I get me to stop? No, okay, okay. This is, again, state level. Okay, this is why I said, yeah, but is there any process in place to improve the standards over time, so that if teachers find that we have issues with them, can we tweak them?
And Kelly, you want to describe the reflection piece that's built in to your design model?
At the state level?
No.
No.
I'm talking about us.
I know. But at the district level, we have put some pieces in where we will be doing teacher-focused groups along the way. We had a math-focused group right before we finished for winter break. Phenomenal information that we received from the math teachers, and that informed some changes that we made to the scope and sequence. We will, we tried to do the ELA one, but it snowed, and so we need to reschedule that. But we do have plans to conduct some teacher-focused groups every quarter for the next two years so that we can take the information that they're giving us based on what worked, what didn't work, and making some adjustments to the scope and sequence.
All right, call. So Haskeman recently, Commissioner Haskeman recently said that at a hearing at the legislature, that we're going to be paying, for the first year, there was a $1 to $5 million increase for testing costs. And I'm wondering, I mean, and I don't know what this cost would be after, but, and if you may comment on that.
That's not a cost of the district, but I don't know what it's going to mean in terms of.
Are we going to have, I mean, how does the, how does the, how does it pay for? Are we going to have costs, I mean, obviously with these computers and transportation costs?
Yeah, ours is, ours is a cost in terms of, obviously, the technology. But that technology's also going to be used for instructional purposes and preparing our students. But there is not a cost in terms of the assessment that we provide as a state. Now, the state, you know, has been funding TCAP for years, and we have the responsibility, obviously, in terms of the administration and, you know, test coordinators handling materials, and that's all, because those are all costs that are built in for the district. The time that's going to be involved here is pretty comparable to what we see now with TCAP. It's actually a little bit longer than just the TCAP achievement test, but we'll be eliminating a writing assessment, we'll be eliminating a constructed response assessment that we do, and obviously certain portions of the current TCAP in reading and math. So the cost in terms of our administrative time is pretty much a wash, and we may actually have less testing time required for these assessments. But we don't put the bill of the district for the actual testing.
I'm not afraid. Dr. Gentry and Mr. Kingston, and I believe Dr. Register had a comment that he wanted to make a call up. Kind of remember here. And I'm always kind of tibbling about how much what we're doing here aligns with what I have to every day. And how, you know, we keep saying that, at the end of the day, seven, eight, nine, and so many people are talking about this, and it boils down to what we keep saying, a small percentage of a student's grade. But it's a significant amount of time and effort and resource that we're going to make. Kind of common, common issue. So I want to kind of make sure I understand, I think I've got about five bullet points here. And I think, and we've had some really good work sessions, and this has been very, I think for the first time, I think it's our third time, I'm talking about Common Core standards, that you've brought out all of the pieces. And I'm wondering if you can get this, because we get so caught up on Common Core and Common Core and state, and what we read and what we fear, and continue to question whether or not what we're doing is the right thing and how we're doing is the right thing. And so I want to kind of throw out something, just throw something when I go. Aligning standards versus changing standards. So we use the word changing, which always causes the hair to stand up on the back of the seat. So we're more aligning ourselves, like, with what we believe students are known. So we're aligning our standards and our goals to what we believe students need to know. And there is a change, but it's not really totally saying you need to know something different. But we measure what you know in a different way. And we allow a broader latitude in a student's ability to articulate that. So I love the multiple solutions path because if there are any reasons for doors to slam in my house between my seventh grader and I, it's because that's not how my teachers said to do it. The other thing that was mentioned is that you have access to this tool called SchoolNet. And that is one thing, I think, that, again, we'll say it kind of quickly, but almost highlights the benefits of Common Core standards. Your resource pool has grown tremendously. And, you know, it's not a small thing to say that now as a district, I may not have to create a whole nother module or a whole nother set of resources and materials, because I can call someone in a different state, on the other side of the country, on a whole different time zone, and get the same materials, because we are now aligned from coast to coast on what we believe students achieve in all of the world. This was said briefly too, someone mentioned social and emotional learning. Again, it's what happens when we get around these kinds of topics, when we get very narrowly focused. And we forget that Common Core standards isn't teaching, isn't changing the kind of student we're trying to develop holistically. That social and emotional learning is still a very big part of this. So when our parents begin to panic that we're creating these molds with children that all look the same, these cookie cutter kids, that's not the case at all. Because all of the other 5,000, 750,000, and 10,000 initiatives that we have have not gone away. Those things that we're doing to create a more civic-minded, and we have a mission statement that says a lot more than what goes on in the classroom. And none of that has been lost in this. And so it still exists and is still a part of what we're trying to accomplish with our students. So I think that's important to not, to not miss as well. Implementation, I wrote it down, I actually chuckled when you said it, because going back to my day job, the very first pushback we get when we're trying to do what we're doing with physicians in our hospitals is that this totally failed when they did it at Hospital B down the street. Had you been to Hospital B down the street to see what they did, you'd have said, no, because they failed. I did? No, I didn't. So what I'm doing is creating a method based on the population of students and implementation approach based on the population of resources and teachers and leadership that I have here, understanding that I have goals and things to achieve with my students. The other thing, I think I will put you back in this category with SchoolNet, is mobility. The mobility rate amongst our student population, especially when you're talking about a district that's 72% free and reduced learning, free reduced skills, is high. We've talked about that since day one that I've been on the board. Comes up every time we talk about scores and trying to track students and what happens when we talk about graduation rates, and the workability always comes up. And so that's another thing to not miss in the value of what we're doing here, is that at a very minimum, I know what they were doing at the high school that you came from. And I know where you should be at the highs from, where you come to the highs that you're coming in from now. So we have to become better champions of what we're trying to accomplish here. The last thing I would mention, and another concern that comes up a lot, is about testing. And I would dare suggest, and that's changed, if you can get to fix something from way back there from long, that because we're moving to Common Core standards, they need to have such a broad array of testing, should be reduced. Because we don't need to measure 44 different things or the 44 different ways that we're teaching something, or the 44 different goals that we're trying to reach. We should be able to intelligently narrow our focus so that we're now aligning curriculum with standards, we should be able to align assessment with those standards. And so be a natural reduction in the amount of testing that we're doing. And so this comes up a lot, and you've mentioned it before, I don't know that we've ever gotten that information, that talks about what that matrix of testing looks like today. But I would love to see that footprint of where we are and how we believe the Common Core standards will allow us to reduce that to something that is really focused, not so disruptive. And even the thing I think that was mentioned in the last town category conversation about testing, that I don't know that stood out, but the statement that was made, you're assessing a student every time you encounter them. And so we've got to find a way to reduce that carved-out company and really capture that assessment. And I believe Common Core standards allows you to do it a lot better than we were in our previous frameworks. We can actually capture that growth and that development during our daily interactions with a student and not having to carve out a day or time to actually do that in a more formal, probably much more stressful way for our students as well as our teachers. So I don't do this often, but I do want to thank you all for this. It's probably one of the best work sessions and presentations that I've been a part of. But my question, yes, I do have one. So what always happens though, we have this time when we get the cheerleaders together, like, we're scared, and they're like, oh, it's bad, and they're holding their breath on. So how, what, and I know you have at least one each, that you just not grab this bull by the horns, and so, you know, what do we, how do we address that? How do we address? So, you know, we run the risk of having five out of six of our third-grade classrooms rocking and rolling, classroom number six, she's either not getting it, she's not buying it, she's, she believes that I'm creating robots, she believes that this really isn't giving me the creativity that I had. Five thousand standards to choose from, now I only got twenty. I mean, on the face of it, you've limited my options for teaching and growth and development. How are we dealing with that within our schools?
While they're passing the mic to the teachers, we anticipated this question.
All right, so thank you. We'll pass it down, start right there. I would say definitely that common planning time that we have, this year we went, we double-blocked English at McGavick because our kids' reading scores were still not improving. The math kept going up, but reading still wasn't. And we said, we have 180 students, I don't have time to teach everything that we have to. So we're double-blocked, I only have 100 students, but I see them every single day for 90 minutes. As a result of doing that, we doubled the number of ninth-grade English teachers that we have. And so we went from two of us that had been there for years teaching together, seven years teaching together, and we added four brand-new people. And so we have taken a mentor role for those teachers. A couple of them came from states where this is like a foreign language to them, so it's been quite a bit of a learning curve. But knowing that we know what's going on, and we have the materials, and we have things that have worked, and we can share that with them, that has eased their growing pains. And I know what's going on in their classrooms because I'm helping provide the materials. And because I'm in a more mentor role for them, I can go and see it happening. So I know that in the other ninth-grade English classrooms, things are going well. I think that's, that's part of it, is just having that common planning and checking in, not letting teachers just shut the door and not having any kind of follow-up or conversation.
Yeah, I think one of the things that's really helping too is the district is moving towards having teacher leaders, not just teachers, but teachers who are also leaders. And that feeds into this support. A lot of the teachers who aren't embracing Common Core is because they don't feel supported. And so when you have teachers in the school who are mentoring each other, when you have coaches, academic coaches in the buildings that are going into their classrooms and helping to model lessons or helping to provide that feedback, and you've got videos that teachers can watch that are very quick and short, that show what needs to be done, it's that kind of collaboration and support that's going to help the teachers who are feeling frustrated or nervous or scared about it. Because once, I've seen the teachers kind of, I've got two math teachers at my school who were very reluctant at first. And I jumped in and said, we're going to do this, you know, we're going to, we're going to start doing these tasks and the kids are going to love it. And they were like, oh, no, we haven't been doing it that way. Now, they came back and said, you know, I loved that we did those tasks for eight days, the kids really enjoyed it. And they, they bought into it now. And so now, as an eighth-grade team, we're sharing with the other grade levels at our school to say, this is a success that we're seeing with our students. And that's really what it comes down to, is we're seeing the success in our classrooms with the learning that our students are having. And so that's going to just continue to feed out. And we keep talking with teachers at other schools, we continue to talk to teachers at other grades, and that kind of support is what's going to help everybody kind of come and feel good and comfortable with it. And it's not going to happen on day one. You know, it's a, it's a growing process, and we're going to continue to grow together and work together to make it happen.
I sort of just want to say ditto and ditto. We do an embedded PD once a week with our literacy coach, and our principal is often there. And it's so great to be able to, you know, hear these things from those two people and then work together to know, like, okay, are you going to be doing this today? Because I'd like to do this too, how can we work together to get this done? And we also have a common planning time. We meet once a week as a team on Thursdays to make sure we're sort of all on the same page. If we have something great to share, then, you know, we're able to share it that way. I also think the training that's been provided has been great. I'm fairly new to the district and I feel like I am prepared. So the collaboration and the training that we've had, I think are slowly getting the curmudgeons on board.
The engineering side, Dr. Gentry, notice the deconstruction approach. I'm glad you brought that up because we were criticized by other people in the state that we were going in that model of deconstructing the standards and what that meant, the selection of the nouns and verbs and pulling everything apart and putting learning targets to it and developing those resources, instead of just handing teachers the standards and saying, these are the standards, go teach. We felt that process taught everybody in the district a process. And that process can be used on anything, that any issue or any standard, it doesn't matter, if it's Common Core or ACT scores or discipline issues, the deconstruction of something teaches you how to rebuild it. And that process, I think, has worked because it has embedded that mentality into every teacher in the district.
And I'm sure you guys remember back to November 2012, when we did that deconstructing with you guys.
Yes, I do.
After having the mic.
The training of our administrators.
Yeah, I was going to actually add that.
Training of our administrators.
Yeah, I was going to actually add that.
Training of our administrators.
Principals are the instructional leaders in our building, and we have trained all of our principals K to 12 to make sure that when they walk into a classroom, they know what a rigorous Common Core lesson would look like. Also, the teacher evaluation model, the team model, they have aligned to Common Core. So when principals have discussions with teachers, they can say and they can comment about, is your instruction aligned to what the Common Core is asking you to do?
Mr. Banks and then Ms. Shepherd.
Yeah, I just want to concur with what Dr. Gentry said, this has probably been the most helpful work session I've been in a year and a half on the board. And further, the question Dr. Gentry asked, might be the best question I've heard asked in terms of insight about, you know, what's working and what's not, and what are we doing to help, what's not. So I stepped up momentarily, Dr. Gentry, this is really probably a question for you. And I think what I heard when I was going back in the room was a reference to a potential proficiency dip that may be on the horizon. We've got obviously new standards, assessments are coming on that will play a line with standards. And what's that going to mean to proficiency? Do we have any projections or best guesses at this point?
I don't think we really do. I mean, we're all anticipating that there could be a negative impact in terms of the actual numbers, in terms of proficiency, just because it is uncharted territory with these assessments. I don't think we'll see anything like the impact we had in 2010 when we changed standards very dramatically in this state, which I think puts us ahead of most states that we've already been through that process once. Again, as I said, with the writing assessment, once we understand, and we're still learning what those assessment items and tasks are likely to look like, they're being released gradually over time, but it'll give us a better, it'll give us better insight into what the expectations are. As I said earlier with the writing assessment, it was, it was a tremendous impact years ago, but we as, and I was with the State Testing Center, we believe that it was important to get that, those skills out there to require students to be able to construct those essays. And I think, you know, what we're saying here is that this is important. The assessments will, it is a process, they will evolve over time. The technology, you know, part of it especially, will evolve over time as we develop other ways to assess these skills. But I don't think it'll be a dramatic impact, but none of us know at this point. And we'll have, probably will have a better idea after the piloting that goes on this spring, as we start to see some state and data and other states start to compile their numbers.
Yes, we're going to call it a little more editorial commentary. Dr. Rich, I feel like there's a, you know, we're kind of teaching one set of standards at the same time currently, we're testing to something that's slightly different because everything's not in alignment yet. And when everything is in alignment, we're not quite sure, as Dr. Gentry said, kind of what that's going to look like. And I think kind of getting out ahead of it with the public communication and public preparedness with parents and community and others to say, now look, you know, we went through this core and there was this dip, that doesn't mean that our kids know less. That means that we've changed the way we're measuring, we've changed the bar, and just, you know, kind of getting way out ahead of that. So that when, when there is a dip, it's not, you know, the sky's falling, you know, in the headlines, it's as expected, dot, 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 there was, you know, this bump. So I think, kind of think the runway that we use to describe that, prepare for that could be important. Hopefully it doesn't happen, hopefully we go up, right?
Now, if it pops, and they are like the rest of our teachers, we will know that. I'd like, I'd like to follow up on that just a minute, by the way. I think one of my impressions of last year was that we talked to teachers about making the transition and moving toward Common Core, but many of them were anxious about abandonment. I think most all of the problems or concerns that we're hearing deal with transition, how do you convert from one to the other? And I think last year, a lot of our teachers were not comfortable abandoning the TCAP standards, the expectations there, because they knew they were going to be tested on the end of the year. And my sense now is that many more of you are moving past that, know that TCAP is going to be modified this year, but that we're on the way to an assessment that will align with Common Core. And I hope that there's a lot more movement toward Common Core instruction now. And back to, I was, I was going to ask a question that Dr. Gentry asked, but Willie is, so you folks are pioneers, you're early leaders, I'll use a different way to express that. And are you getting, are you seeing more buy-in? I know you own it, you have ownership, but what about buy-in and do you have a sense of what's going on beyond your own schools?
So as a state trainer, I met with, you know, teachers from our district and across the state, most recently this weekend, but also in previous weekends. And I can say without a doubt that our district has been looked to by some of the other trainers as a success for slowly transitioning into the Common Core. Teachers asked, you know, what are you guys doing? I said, well, we are slowly making these changes, we're getting teachers used to it. This year, we have more teachers working with the Common Core standards. And at our school, I think all of our math teachers have bought in. And when I talk to teachers at other schools, I'm feeling a lot of the same thing, that as they become more informed and as they feel supported, they're definitely seeing that this is a positive change. And the strongest thing that helps teachers buy in is seeing what the students can do and what they can accomplish. And that's really what it all comes down to, is when we teach in a new way and we, we hold the kids to these higher standards, they meet us where we expect them to be. And when you see your kids engage in those conversations, I think every teacher just becomes inspired to just continue to do that. And so that's the change we're really seeing, is the way that our kids learn. Walk into a classroom where the kids are working with these new standards and you see a new kind of learning happening.
So I have one other point that I want to make, and I'll ask for a reaction for this, but Dr. Roy stands up, I want you to, Dr. Roy stands up. I didn't ask you to come to the mic.
Sweet.
But I am pumped up about All-Star Training. I am getting so much positive reaction from teachers across our district. And Dr. Roy's crafted this thing, but we know now that by August first, we'll have some 6,000 teachers who are confident and individualizing instruction, using technology as a tool. And the other thing that's so good about that is we are going to institutionalize it so that all new teachers who come into this system have that same competency level and the same opportunities as we before. And I think that's a tremendous advantage to us. And I'll thank you for what you're doing and ask you if you have any reaction to that in my life.
I think so. When I brought the information back to my school, there were a few people, of course, that were like, well, am I going to be able to do all that, still have the summer or not? And I thought, well, yes, you will. But the more that people are looking into this, the more I'm able to talk about it, the more they're seeing that it really is a great use of time. It's a wonderful way for us to implement the things that we're already implementing in a way that's helping move the initiatives that we've heard so much about to actually being implemented. So I felt really empowered after I took the eight modules. I thought, great, I can do this. And that was one of the reasons I chose to do the All-Star Training was because I knew I would have to learn it. And in order to learn it, you know, I wanted to be taught, to learn, to teach. So I'm seeing more people coming on board when they realize that it's just sort of adding to their confidence for Common Core. It's interesting, it's really neat.
Ms. Shepherd?
Okay, so Dr. Gentry stole my first question and then Dr. Ray stole my follow-up, so thank you. Okay. And I want to say something, well, I've got some comments for each of our teachers, but I'll save those to the end. This is pretty amazing. And I tell you, as I'm sitting here, well, one great thing about sitting here is that everybody answers all the questions and I don't have to worry about asking and answering the questions. But I did want to say too, a couple of things that came to mind while I'm sitting here and going through this. The first thing I thought about when we talked about growth learning was I remember, and I'm about to date myself so badly here, I remember when, as a child growing up, we got these cards that were multiplication tables, were printed on the cards, generally from an insurance agent that dropped out of our house. And so we would go through these things and we would learn our multiplications, and it was absolutely, as you said, it was, you know, three times seven, so what? But I remember taking it to school with me, and my teacher, I remember so well, saying, can you tell me why you think that's true or how do you know it's true? Simply because it's printed? Prove it to me. And I still don't like math that much, I would be a different person, but it started making me think, so maybe I shouldn't really believe that this is true. And so every time I came up, a multiplication problem came up, I always started imagining if it was three times straight, okay, so we've got three times, three times straight. See, I've got all these little dots. And so it just, it made me think outside the box, which was fantastic. I also had an opportunity recently to sit in on a math class at Kennedy Middle School where it was amazing, as you said, to watch these students go back and forth over resolving an issue. And it got to, it was really fun for me to watch because one young lady said, you are just wrong and let me show you why. And she literally took her papers with her classmates and said, come here, this is why you're wrong. And I didn't want to leave the classroom, it was just so, it was entertaining, but it was absolutely fantastic to see these children again thinking outside the box. They were not relying on the teacher to teach them something, they were getting the general idea, and they were making each other responsible for making me believe that what they were saying was the truth. And it was fantastic. High school, same thing. I love PBL, just saying. And because I was recently involved in a sociology panel at Cambridge High School, it was the coolest thing I've ever seen. These students had gone through this, building this panel from classroom instruction, from speaking to their teachers, from a lot of different variations, they gathered all this information. They sent out invitations to several people saying, come to our classroom, we've got this, this idea that we want to bring to life. And so they, each of the students, probably 25 or 30, had time to ask questions of all the panelists and get their input on certain items or certain topics that they had talked about. And they had, they had groups, they were probably five or six groups of students who would gather together and say, okay, here's our project and we're going to learn this and we're going to ask our panelists this. And then they just went around, but every single thing tied to the lesson that was being taught. And it wasn't just reading it out of a book, it was learning it and it was retaining it. And two weeks later, they still understand why they did what they did. So it was, it was all fantastic. So I'm just, I'm a cheerleader. Anything else? Ms. Fearing?
Thank you. I just want to echo that it's so wonderful to have teachers here tonight, sharing your experiences from those in the trenches, so thank you for being here. And most of the people that I talk to are supporters of Common Core. The confusion and the angst is about park testing. And there's one particular math question in first grade that I'd like your opinion on so that you can help me understand how to respond. But the question is, you know, there's eight toys on the table and eight toys on the floor, how many toys are all together? The students have an opportunity to choose one of four answers. Eight plus six is not among those answers. Ten plus four is the correct answer. And but if you say, I got ten, I got this, I chose number D for this, looking at the 14, because eight plus six is 14, then that is considered incorrect. Is there any proof in that?
Okay, you're confusing me, because I think you said eight plus eight.
Okay, eight plus six.
Okay. First grade on my part.
It's got something to do with basic geometry, but can you explain why we're doing that at first grade and why you would say this is one and only way to answer it, we can't use multiple ways to answer that question?
Okay.
Mic please, thank you.
Sorry, I was like, mic? Right, when, when you're creating tens, when you're adding or subtracting and you're creating tens, then you learn to break apart or decompose the numbers. So if I was going to talk to my students about this in first grade, I would say, okay, here's the best part about this, you get to make a ten, remember how easy that is? Okay, so I'm going to break apart my six so that my eight becomes a ten. So what do I need to do to break apart my six? And that's when you can go through, okay, six could be one plus five. Well, if I added either one of those numbers to the eight, is that going to get me?
Well, I understand how to get there. It's not that I don't understand that. What I need to understand is why we are not giving students an opportunity to give multiple ways to allow them to answer it. If the child chooses 14, but says that he got it, I added eight plus six, that is incorrect according to what I have read. So I just want to understand that, because it makes sense that what we're doing with Common Core is that we are giving kids an opportunity to think creatively and multiple ways to solve a problem rather than saying this is the one and only way.
I have more questions for you, and you and I can talk about it. I think on that, I would be curious to see that because there, the assessments, no, and also, there are no park assessments for K1 and 2. So that's where it was like, why Jill, I've got a question for you. So where might that be coming from? I'd really like to see it, whether it's a task that was part of something, or is this about conceptual understanding or exactly what? But, but, and that came up last night too, was that. But presently, park testing for Common, that matches up with Common Core state standards begins in third grade and then moves up. So presently, with K1 and 2, the work that we would do would be formative in nature to see how kids are moving toward that at that point. But if, can you get a copy of it? We can look at it? Great, we'll do it like that.
And one more thing too, is that there's, there's two different kinds of tasks we do with Common Core. There's instructional tasks and then there's assessment tasks. And that sounds like an instructional piece to get students to focus on the base ten. But that wouldn't be one that you would use as an assessment piece to assess what they've learned, because it would be, you know, that's focusing more on like one aspect of a standard. So I think that that's a difference too. Sometimes we see in the media, people are taking instructional tasks that are meant to be used in the classroom as a discussion piece, and they're posing it as what we're assessing the kids on. And that's something that isn't being, you know, differentiated between in a lot of the media sources.
So we actually will not have park testing for K2 or K3?
Third grade.
Starts in third.
But we will be teaching at kindergarten, first and second grade how to?
Certainly, they'll still be engaging in, in that kind of, of learning, and the teachers will still be evaluating them, it just won't be with an official park assessment.
Okay. As we get into this, and we need to make adjustments, I suspect, you know, you've thought about that. And will that be, do we have the authority to do that? Or is that, is that owned, are the park assessments owned by Pearson? Is it owned by our district that we can tweak it in a way that?
That's a Paul question.
Come on, Paul.
We want you to, Paul.
Each state has some input in this process and we don't, obviously, all we can do is offer, you know, our, our input, our suggestions, but I can tell you, we do that currently with, with state assessments when we see things that we don't think are aligned properly. But this will be a process. Tennessee is, you know, one of the governing states. Tennessee is, you know, one of the governing states in the part development and Emily Barton in particular just didn't heavily involve in that process. We will have opportunities to share with them as we currently do. Whether or not that'll change the assessments is another story, but I think we'll all have an opportunity to see why assessment items are developed the way they are and hopefully, you know, there will be some opportunity for that conversation. But we're, you know, this isn't just a Tennessee process, but Tennessee does have some input in terms of that process.
And Paul, do you agree with what Sharon said, that with the, under the part, we actually will have probably less testing?
We're going to have high stakes testing. The quantity of testing.
Can I clarify what Sharon said? With the Common Core standards, we have an opportunity to reassess the quality of the yellow. I didn't say that we would be in the department.
And I think part of what you're saying goes back to a conversation we had, Paul, with standard-based grading and the fact is, we get better at aligning our, our grading and our day-to-day assessment as teachers with the state expectations, that we'll have less of a need on those, for those other assessments. That's the goal. We know that we have classrooms where we're right on the mark in terms of our identification of students being advanced provision. Basically, we have other classrooms where they're, we're not aligned, but we're, you know, the whole idea with that standard-based grading is to have more consistent expectation. So, I think that's going to be a process. The actual testing time next year, it's still going to be significant. We will be cutting back on some of the assessments that we were doing in this preparation process for part. We're also going to be doing away with our interim benchmarks, but as Dr. Steele mentioned, we'll have formative assessments. Those are the things we do though, to drive instruction on a regular basis, common assessments that our classroom teachers develop. Those will still be there, but it goes back to the idea that we are assessing each day for instructional purposes. It's not, it shouldn't be an add-on, it should be what we do to make those day-to-day decisions in terms of where our focus should be with our kids.
And like the TCAP, we have a two-week window to administer the TCAP?
With TCAP, we have a little less than a two-week window. With part, I believe we're going to have about a four-week window, but it will, because of the computer administration, it's going to have to, the kids are going to have to be funnelled through over a period of time. But the state may cut that down a little bit, we'll be working with them. My guess is initially, the window is going to be pretty broad. If the technology improves over the next few years, that we can cut the window down, that would be the goal. We can only do the testing in, you know, in terms of time based on the technology available.
Thank you, Paul. Any additional questions?
Okay, we're going to wrap this up and I want to say thank you to our very special guest. Thank you so much. And I wanted to say to our teachers, I've been kind of watching you guys tonight and I think I figured it out. I was trying to figure out the difference of where you're all very excited and very involved in what you're doing. Ms. Burns, elementary teacher, full excitement, a lot of hands and facial expressions. I imagine your kids walk in the classroom excited about learning, because every time you spoke, I was like, "She's just adorable." So, I'm just sharing a little bit, what I see with you guys. Ms. Dennison, focused, excited, very eager to watch your students get it. When they get it, I imagine you're like, "Yes, yes, they finally got it." And that's fantastic, that's fantastic. So, and again, I've seen that, I've witnessed that in the classroom, and I see the teacher standing in back with this, "Yeah, I did that." So, I imagine that's kind of the feeling you get when you watch these kids every day. Ms. Vanos, here's what's really fun and fascinating about what I see about you. You are, you have the, I don't know about, that thing where you're looking at these kids when they walk into high school and you're like, "Now's time to bring it all together. Let's see what you've learned from elementary and what you've learned from middle, and let's bring it all together and make this thing happen for you so that when you walk out of this building, you are ready for the world." And I see that among every one of you and I see how seriously you take your jobs and I commend you for doing a fantastic job. Thank you, thank you all for being here and thank you all for continuing to serve our students the way that you do. It is awesome. So, having said that, Ms. Brown?
There being no murder, Mr. Dinnison.
Thank you, guys. We can't thank you enough.